Good evening and welcome to the Winston Salem Forsyth Kelly Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, August 23, 2022. I am board chair, Joanna Kaplan. Normally at this time, I welcome our viewers on Cable 2. Tonight, due to a system failure, our meeting will not be seen on Cable 2, but it will be broadcast live on YouTube. The link is available on all of our social media platforms. The meeting will also be broadcast in its entirety on Cable 2 later this week. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, followed by the dedication led by vice chair, Lyle Carter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father, give our children a thirst for knowledge, wisdom, and understanding as this new year begins. May their hearts be ready to learn this year and enjoy their school year. Help our teachers also to understand and to be kind and to know how much we appreciate them and how much we appreciate what they are doing for our children. Bless all that are involved in our system here and please be with us as we celebrate another year. Amen. Amen. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. And based on the finance can we vote to approve the proposed back-to-school bonus at this meeting? I would like to amend the agenda to add consider approval of the back-to-school bonus to the action items for tonight. Do I have a motion? Yes, and just please make sure it says pending approval by VPI on that motion. Okay. Okay, second? All in discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is the public hearing on proposed naming of the West Forsyth Gym 4. You will have three minutes to speak and our first speaker is Pat Nguyen.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Nguyen. I am a former Winston Forsyth County Schools teacher and sister president. I am representing the Club 61 of Chris Paul Leadership Alliance. The Chris Paul Foundation sponsors student security from students in East City from Christmas play professionals. I attended the summit this year at the Shepherd Law with a group of students from Winston Salem. It was the most amazing educational and inspirational conference I have ever attended. Chris was an attendee as well as his family. They interacted daily with participants, loved on behalf of them and provided opportunity for them to learn about financial literacy, social responsibility, social emotional learning, community service, and just how to be excellent individuals in every way. Chris modeled such important values that each of us left inspired and ready to change our city. In my opinion, naming this gym is an expression of love for such an amazing young man who is truly making a difference in the lives of our young people.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Cuthbert.
Good evening, everyone. Like we said, I too attended the Chris Paul Summit head one at the time. We started the day in Winston Salem, in my empathy, we first taken to the Pacific Ocean where our children got to stick up deep in the Pacific Ocean and what an experience that was. And so I represent today the past, the present, the future, healing our schools from the inside out. Journeying me back to 1976 when I was in 11th grade, I was thus to West Forsyth. Upon arriving at the summit before the 11th graders, bars the cheerleader, nothing about campus said welcome to me. There were barely any black teachers and staff, there was no person to talk about history. We were black children on the east side stripped away from our environment and culture and thrown into a sea of blackness and told to swim. On our Be Anything You Want Today, Be Anything You Want Today, one of my classmates wore his crying suit to class and it was a daughter that is okay. Many of us swam and many of us drowned academically and emotionally, but rest aside. Racism when a teacher knocked on my door and I left that year or party senior high. There was no place that reminded us of our greatness in society and all the contributions that we as black people have made to the world. I do not know the finer ways of life now, but I do know that black children of Boston, East Winston, and there needs to be a place on campus that they can be proud of. The naming of Chris Paul as gym will be one decision that this boy will make today that we will be proud of. The naming of Chris Paul gym will be beacon of hope for our children and especially black children as they matriculate through the halls of West Forsyth. And if in the future, there's a building on our campus that represents transformational leadership, emotional intelligence, business development, or there's a need on the campus to be named, just the campus to be named, we recommend that you name that Chris Paul as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Kimberly Copeland.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Copeland. I'm a senior and ambassador at Reagan High School. And I'm here to talk about how the Chris Paul Foundation and Chris Paul has affected my life tremendously. I have been here quite a few times. He married me out of the Miss June Teeth pageant of Miss June Teeth for Miss Dan Copeland. Ever since then, Chris Paul and his family foundation have affected my life in many ways. From my pageant, he's affected and his family, they're wonderful. Jada Paul and Robin Paul, his wife, or yes, his wife and mom, they came to us with open arms. They had many resources for us. They let us pick dresses to try on and wear and keep for our pageant. And even after that, they gave us the wonderful once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to go to California, LA with them to learn about leadership, networking, finance, and fitness and nutrition. This was a once-in-a-lifetime experience where I learned about many people in the United States and many situations I probably may have known of. It was wonderful networking with them and just being around many positive people that have also come from difficult situations that our people of color is really inspiring. And all this, I just want to say that Chris Paul, he is someone to defer, a place and name. And West Forsyth, it's his gym and I think it would be wonderful if the name of the gym was named after him. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Aljamar.
Good evening, board chair, Kaplan. It's Lieutenant McNamara. And it's been good to see you back. I hope you got some rest, read a book, not a big deal. I want to thank the principal of West Forsyth and the athletic director of West Forsyth who took it upon themselves to find this befit of a young man who has made not only a footstep, but he made many footsteps in this community. And it's not just about the West Forsyth school. It's about every young male and female, a male who may be six feet tall and they say you can't make it. But Chris has given an example of what that means to be a shorty who can play beat. Also for a young lady who might be five-five, she can look at Chris and see what Chris has done and inspire her to be a great athlete. As a volunteer in this community, I've had a lot of time I spent with Chris at the YMCA when he was a shorty, shorty. But there was never, never any doubt in my mind that this young man was going to be great because he had a heart of steel. And what he has done for the many schools, not just West Forsyth, but the many students, for the many black kids who have someone they can look out and see somebody who looks like them with their name on the floor. That means a lot. So I'm asking you, you know, sometimes we come in here and we stay at 7:30, 8:30, 9:30, rassling over things. Today you don't have to rassle because this is cut and dry. There's no way in the world that we're going to lose this opportunity to give my man, Chris Paul, his true date. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Karen Spainhour. Kevin, I'm sorry. Kevin, hi there, you.
I've been called a lot worse. So thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to hear from Captain, distinguished board members, Miss McNamara. I'm Kevin Spainhour, principal at West Forsyth. And as we began this journey, for those of you in the audience, I started at West Forsyth in the spring of 2021. And in any leadership position, it's important to be able to gauge the culture of what you have inherited when I became the principal of a school of nearly 2,400, 100 students and 170 employees. And so I spent, we spent the first three months, I did just kind of the present day of West Forsyth. And man, you are more than welcome to come to West Forsyth. You might not have been in the seventies, but you can come on. I'm saying this. All right? But it's, it was very clear to me as I learned the culture of what is the village of West Forsyth that I needed to go beyond, we need to go beyond just the current day and to look at the past. And so in order for us to set a direction for our young people to cast a vision of what we want for our young people to aspire to, I think it's important to lean into the history that West Forsyth offers as a school, as a community of Lewisville Clemens. And it's safe to say that Chris Paul is not just one of the best athletes to grace the halls of West Forsyth, but he would definitely be in the conversation about being one of the best to ever come through Winston Salem Forsyth Young Schools. But beyond athletic accomplishments, as Athletic Director Mike Pennington and I explored this option, we started talking to his former athletic directors, former teachers, retired folks. I went and had lunch early this summer with the old principal, that was his principal, Mr. Kirk Telfer, and met with him and talked about some of those things that's already been mentioned about his character. Things like perseverance, integrity, discipline, a willingness and a commitment to excellence. All those values that he stands for are values that we discuss with our current students. And so in order to set that vision for our current folks, we found it, we found it important enough to go to his parents first. I sat down with Mr. Paul and we had a conversation to get his blessing. And then we put the proposal together and put it before you guys. So I thank you for the consideration. We are super excited about the opportunity and we'll welcome, we'll welcome your guests to the ceremony if it were to go through. So thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. Please enjoy our board spotlight video.
We have about 116 new teachers coming in. These are first-year teachers, their very first day coming into education. So we're just really excited to welcome them, make them feel part of our district.
Starting a new job as a donkey tech and for teachers it's no different. With that in mind, leaders from all over WSFCS line the sidewalk outside the gate before the new school year begins.
Walk at the door and you get to impact life and determine the future of kids. Who gets to do that and remain? You do.
My best friend growing up, her older sister had Down syndrome. So just growing up with her really got me into special education and seeing all the kids just accomplish the small things really makes me excited. So that's why I'm on it.
Well, I have a passion for students. I have a passion for people and education is a big, big passion for me. And right now, I feel like it's all hands on deck to get our students where they need to be.
WSFCS has partnered with law enforcement, first responders, and area universities to adopt a new standard response protocol, or SRP, developed by the I Love You Guys Foundation for the 22, 23 school year. And SRP is standard clear language meant to organize response with any event that happens in a school or threat to school safety. Earlier this month, the executive director of the I Love You Guys Foundation led an all-day training event for around 450 school and emergency personnel. That training designed to get all organizations involved and on the same page, ready to respond to any incident in the future.
Statistically, schools are still the safest place that we can send our kids. And I don't think that worrying parents is the right thing to do. We want to embrace our schools. We want to love and help kids in our back in school. The training and preparation really is part of preventive.
We're at the Kino Community Services just down the road from Old Town Elementary. We've got a wonderful pop-up school supply shop with no-cost school supplies for the families that are certified with Kino Community Services who attend Old Town Elementary, Mills Springs Elementary, and middle schools and several other schools across the district.
We intend to serve over 100 students from elementary school to high school. And so we have all of our volunteers out helping families shop back to school together. And we've been raising donations for school supplies for the last couple of weeks. And we have just enough for all of our 100 students.
This is an amazing collaborative event with United Black Native groups, including Women United and groups at Truist and Avat. We've got Pepsi and we're at a latte employee resource group here. We've got students from Wake Forest University School of Law doing a craft. So it's just an all-encompassing community event to support our scholars.
And this is the perfect example of our community coming together to serve this purpose of providing school supplies for our students.
That's truly our remarkable effort and the first of its time here in this community and so will do more in the future.
Laying flag in the black shirt, check out 16-year-old Parkland High School sophomore Antoine Hughes Jr. reaching a major goal in his young life by winning 100-meter dash at the AAU Junior Olympics held at North Carolina A&amp;T earlier this month.
So this sophomore year, I've just been working like crazy. I had a lot I wanted to accomplish. So I shot the gun, it was on. I got out. It was a good assignment. We got out together a little bit. It was ahead of me, I want to say the first 70, 80. And that last, that last 22 minutes, I had to go get them. I'm wearing them like 1048, mine is a PR.
Antoine Hughes Jr., 1038.
Man, it was crazy. Motion, everything. I'm going for my body at the same time. I can't even explain it. It was amazing.
Antoine gives a lot of credit for his success to Parkland track coach Antoine Hughes Senior.
You know, but I didn't understand is how I feel to have a national champion as a coach and a center. So you know, it's, it's amazing, amazing. That definitely means that he is the fastest 15, 16-year-old in the country. And you know, he's putting a lot of hard work. He deserves that opportunity to be able to say he's the fastest 15, 16-year-old in the country. It's a great school, great place to be. And for him to be able to be a student here at Parkland and put us on the national pedestal is what we want to do. It's great for Parkland.
WSFCS celebrated summer school commencement at West Forsyth High School earlier this summer. Around 60 students from 11 different high schools in the district showed dedication and perseverance as they reached that ultimate goal of graduating high school.
The most successful people in life in the first year, they're not a free person. And you never give up and have to struggle.
This is a huge accomplishment for these students. You can tell when you see the emotion like this on West Forsyth graduates, who does not have space.
It's so big that it reminds me of what I've overcome and the things that I've gone through because I am from Pakistan where my parents didn't really have the opportunity to get a full education, especially a high school education. And me coming here and having the chance to have that showed me the possibility. Honestly, it's one day at a time because not anything is done overnight. It takes time. It takes a lot of perseverance. It takes a lot of love and dedication. And definitely a support system. Everybody supports the system of some kind of some sort. We can't really make it without it.
They graduated at class of 2022. They persevered. And you know what? All of our students faced a lot of challenges in the past two years. And it wasn't easy to give up. Not this group of students. I wish them the best. I congratulate them from the bottom of my heart. And I know they're going to go on to just break things in their future.
And with that, summer comes to a celebratory close and so does this edition of Board of Education Spotlight.
At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items. The instructions for this section are on the sheet as you sign up. The most important rule to remember is that you be kind and respectful and know that we cannot talk about sensitive or private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Thank you. First, we have Michelle Jordan.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. So I'm here to speak about those tonight and just to speak to that and thank you for putting something forward. You know, we're all hurting. I mean, we have job positions open in every category all across the state. I don't know if you've seen the new numbers. I'm saying like over 1,000 positions open across the state, like bus drivers, maintenance, you know, everything. So getting us that bonus, I hope it's going to be for everybody because we really need that money. And I'm just going to plug, once again, you know, I've come up here before, but we really need you guys aren't happening just for no reason. And you know, and also locally, if we can't look at our, you know, classified stuff going forward. I know that we talked about compression and we have to look at stuff again, but we really need to get some money in people's pockets. So I just appreciate anything that you guys can do locally and then including advocating about the state purse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nathan Parrish.
Good evening. I want to speak tonight to agenda item related to the Title I application. And just I guess ask a couple of questions as much as any other thing. In reviewing the application, the first thing I noticed was that it indicates there are 27,539 low-income students in the district, but the plan in the application is serving 20,637. So there's a discrepancy of 6,902 students. Now, some of those students are not in schools that qualify for Title I funds because they've all below the threshold. But there are, it appears, eight schools that are not included in the allocation structure that are above 35%, but are not sufficiently allocated funds. That total comes to approximately 3,100 students in those eight schools based on the numbers that are in the form. So I'm wondering about that. I'm wondering about those schools in particular that appear to be excluded. If I'm wrong, someone I'm sure will set me straight, but it looks like that they're falling away. The second thing that I want to speak to is the decision that the district makes to continue to use a way of measure. And just how do we get that measure? You know, these numbers seem at times kind of arbitrary in the way they're calculated. Like the highest number being 1,000, I think it's $1,040 for the schools at the highest end of the concentration of poverty or low-income students in the school and then drops down to like $600, $93 per student at the lower end, even though some of those schools have twice the number of low-income students in them. So the district has lots of ways you can choose to allocate the money, the $18 million. It could take it all of them, could it all in the schools above 75%? Of those half we funded, say we're going to go all in on those schools. Or it could choose a different method, but how do these numbers get calculated is kind of a mystery. I can read the numbers, do math, but how do they actually come up with that number? And then I guess the third thing is the continuation of school-wide programming versus targeted assistance as a choice. You know, the Title I funds are intended to serve at-risk students directly. I understand school-wide programming provides flexibility in theory. Everyone rises after the ship rises, but I wonder if those funds would be better served if they were directed directly to the students who are in the school receiving the funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Val Young.
Good evening, board. For many years, we have talked about our tax cuts that we needed and we all feel that they deserve increasing ourselves. And happy this year that hours of waiting booth go up to $15 an hour and there will be an increase for people who make more than $15 an hour. However, I still feel like there's something that we can do. However, I still feel like there's something that we can do to do a couple of things. Increase the salary of our classified staff and to work on wage compression for our classified staff. Like you, I believe that our classified staff are the hardest working people in our school building. We didn't have the bus drivers, we didn't have the people in the cafeteria, ladies and gentlemen in the cafeteria, our chief aides, our support staff, we didn't want to. So I feel like there has to be something that we can do to increase their salaries. We have asked for, obviously did, and still we have not made a move to an extent. So we have started to move. The state moved a little bit. And I feel like we have to move a little bit too. Yes, I'm a teacher who is, you know, a backup staff, and most of the time, I feel like we're not going to get anything, so don't worry about it. But I'm not the person who works so hard and keeps giving and giving, and it doesn't seem like anybody is hearing that they deserve more than they're given. I personally represent everybody in the school system, but I have a heartful of people who are doing the heavy lifting. I couldn't have done my job if it wasn't for the bus drivers, our child workers. I couldn't have done my job when our kids came to school hungry. And you have to be there to teach them. I couldn't have done my job without an expert teacher assistant. And when I have made it, when we talk about our children being double doses of something, I could do two and three times as much because I had a quality teacher assistant in my classroom. I'm going to say this in advance, I'm going to thank you in advance for voting here for a bonus for everyone, but I'm going to challenge you to go above and beyond for our classified staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Daniel.
I think I signed up to speak at the end of the meeting. Did I say?
Oh, you're on the, this one.
Okay, well, since that's... Good evening. I hadn't intended to speak now because I thought that, since I was maybe, it wasn't going to be, I wouldn't be allowed to speak on.
Well, you can obviously...
I listened to the finance committee meeting about the $4.4 million...
Mr. Daniel, you have to speak on the agenda items for the board meeting.
Well, that's what I thought.
Okay, all right.
So put me on the end.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Thank you. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update. Thank you. Kevin's getting the PowerPoint ready, so, let's see. All right, we can turn. So you've seen enough about this within our, within the video highlights, but I did want to make sure that we thank Elevation Church for hosting this event, and also Greater Woods and Salem Inc. for providing lunch for those 400 and 400-plus employees that attended the I Love You Guys training appearance. And everyone is going to be hearing a lot of detail about this. They've already been out there. There was a press conference yesterday, but I think was, oh, today? Today. That will probably be televised today on different channels. And so this was a great event, so thank you. We're going to all be on the same page moving forward. Accountability updates, just so everyone knows, the date for the release of performance grades and designations and cohort graduation rates will be September 1st. So I wanted to make sure our board knew that. We will be preparing a presentation and information to go out to the public and to our board. So I just wanted you to have that in the back of your mind of the date for that. All right, COVID guidelines. There is a press conference on Friday with our Director of Nursing, KDP, to get more information about COVID. We are still following the guidance of Health Department. It's really not much has changed, other than if you are, if you are testing positive, the five-day exclusion. And so that's pretty much, you know, masking is still optional. Testing, there are, this is one addition. We have testing on every school campus now. So if you are symptomatic, you can take a test, and if you're negative, stay in school. Because again, we are not doing close contacts. That is, everyone monitoring their, themselves as close contacts, although we do still have COVID coordinators at each school Friday to provide support for one more year. So these are the changes. We're still being supported by our local health department.
So, we have superintendents of the testing at schools. Students are, students make the choice whether or not they want to test or not.
Well, parents make the choice if they want their child to test. Yes, exactly. So parent, parent has to be there, yes. Parent permission for testing, absolutely. Yes. All right, vacancies. Wanted to give an update. We did the human capital update two weeks ago, and so we've had some, some movement and changes. So here are our classroom vacancies as of right now, the elementary, middle, and high. We do have plans in place for coverage on all of these, but that is, that is our number right now of the total vacancies for our classroom teachers. The classified, we did not include all employees. We only include those very large groupings of folks so that you can see that. The classified in general, which are site-based positions, 65 drivers, 60 11-hour process, and kitchen assistants, 94 22-hour process. And then the other thing is, some of the, our schools and teachers, I want to thank them because they've gotten very creative. And I think in the human capital update two weeks ago, I had said that let's put the funding from lap salaries back into the hands of our employees. If they were to take on additional students, we'll provide virtual, a virtual option in your classroom. So these are just ways that we are compensating our own employees. Again, we, one of the things we've said, we clearly want all of our teachers to get their planning period this year. So these options are a little bit different, although if they chose to give up a planning period, they also are compensated for that. But again, this is just to put lap salary money, if they're in the main, if in a class collapse and I get a few more students, it is going, they're going to be compensated this year for that. And this is me in Missouri. Community engagement. I want to thank the Carnersville Rotary. They actually hosted, and the YMCA, it was a partnership with the Carnersville, why the Carnersville Rotary for hosting a back-to-school shopping event. It was a lot of fun, I can just tell you that. Buying clothes for, one of, each of us were assigned a child, and we got to shop. And so thank you to those, to that partner, partnership for our students. Also, these are other community engagement events. Hope Winston Salem. I want to thank all, like, folks from our administrative center, our head building, and our Inspire Institute. So all of our Inspire 340 schools were at our, a leadership of their, their own back-to-school institute. Out of all those groups, we, we actually collected 421 pounds of snacks and food pantry items to support Hope's work. And so that will actually be a distribution of 1,000 meals to scholars and families in 30 neighborhoods in Boston, Thurman, and Eastones. And so again, that was another community event. Old Town Pop-Up, this was already mentioned back in the, in the highlight. But again, 120 scholars and families were able to actually shop, and you saw them filling their backpacks. And that was thanks to United Way and other corporate partners that you can see there, PFC, Adalunke, and students at Wake Forest University, and also our own multilingual learning team was there on site to provide support. Few other things this weekend, it's been, it's been happening out there. So thank you to all of our community supporters. We've had them busy for back-to-school events. But this past Saturday, the actual Home Builders Association sponsored their first 5K. There were about 100 participants, and it was called Nailed It 5K. And it was really well-attended, and actually folks that joined brought school supplies with them. And our own Teacher of the Year actually started the race, Nicole. She was incredible. And then also Bookmarks, sponsored by Back-to-School Batch. And so you can see right there, that is an author of that book, reading to students. And so again, Carver High Drumline was there to perform. And so thank you to everybody from the family engagement equity teams being present to provide support. Couple other engagements. Sunday night, if you, many of our employees came to Belk for back-to-school night at Belk for our educators. And so thank you there also to Greater Woods and Salem Inc. and Belk. They have lots of good deals. And not only that, but just vendors all over the place giving out food and music, a DJ. That should be a mandatory requirement, DJs at while you shop. Because that, you know, even though you probably spend more money because you're having fun. But anyway, but thank you. Our employees that I saw there were having so much fun. And you could see in that picture, this North Carolina was there. That was pretty exciting to meet her. And then also Daggett Schuler this morning, they were also, went to five of our schools to hand out backpacks, 50 per, per school. And so thank you to them as well, in partnership with Winston Salem Police Department. Also, that last slide, our school team, they are all, these are just some highlights. We could fill up slide after slide of our back-to-school events. First of all, we added two days of, of pre-planning last week, which was new, two days, what we call them RT days, so that teachers could just work in their classrooms because they always come back early anyway, and that probably still wasn't even enough, enough time. But just with no meetings, no interruptions, two days that they, that they could really get set up. And then the meetings kind of started this week. And so you could just see some pictures. I'll tell you that the picture with a lot of people in the, in the middle was the Inspire 340 Institute. That was incredible. Every, all the teachers and staff from Inspire 340 schools were at that to kick off the school year. The bottom right picture was this morning. Those are, that is the, the middle school ELA teachers from every middle school who found out this morning that they were all getting $3,000 worth of costume libraries. And it was really fun because we drew the, three names were drawn, so three people thought they won it, and everybody was like, those three people just got $3,000. And Melissa Agee actually unveiled that they all got $3,000 for costume libraries. And so they were really, really excited. But not only that, our, the elementary teachers, we'll hear about this in 90 by 25 update, we also did costume libraries for our elementary classrooms. And, you know, we always say that people, our teachers and other educators spend so much of their money, and part of that honestly is having great books in their classrooms. And so we, we think this will really be helpful to them and to our students. I wanted to point out two more other things, like in the top left corner with that beautiful setting, that is, Carnersville Middle School, Lisa May is there, I think council, I hope I got that right.
Social worker.
She, they created their, a space for staff, it's a wellness room for staff. And so I know we talk a lot about wellness rooms for kids and these types of staff, but they've created that space for staff. She doesn't know I was going to highlight it, but I, I wanted to include that. If you look right under that, Walbertown Elementary School, that was kind of their back-to-school theme. And, you know, we, we gave a challenge to our principals to make back-to-school fun, exciting. And I actually, you know, said that if you inspire your staff so much that you bring them tears, I'll give you $100, I'll give you $100 principal if you inspire, because remember, you inspire people through heart and minds, not just through data. It's hearts and minds. And so basically, I have a few that I'm going to have to pay out. It's my own, but I have to find out from teachers where else that happens. If there, if you were brought to tears for the grade, inspiring back to school, I owe your principal $100. But anyway, so it's just been a great opening. Our, our staffs and our teachers have been incredible. Cash, the two in the middle, that was Cash, Cash's day back, with the two ladies in the middle and then to the left, their principal AP in there. They, they had a lot of fun in their, in their back-to-school. So tonight is our high school open house, that's why Barry Suits are not in session tonight, because they're at the open houses for high school. Tomorrow night, I believe, is Elwell, Ben Hill. No, and then Thursday is Elwell. So, and Career Center. We'll be having all of that this week. And then we are so blessed, I don't think I have any more slides, but we bring our students back on Monday. And thank you to all the organizations that, I've, I've been part of different prayer activities around the community, and also just, I get, I'm getting, I get so many texts from pastors and others that they're praying for a great opening, and I want to just highlight that. Prayers are appreciated, and so are all the different events that are happening around the community. Thank you. Thank you. That was a great superintendent's update, really was. I just want to add that I've spoken with teachers, and they are, they just feel like there is this excitement, this great atmosphere in the air for the opening of school. So thank you. Thanks for all you do. Our next item of business are discussion items. First is the proposed naming of the West Forsyth Chair Board by Daryl Walker, our Chief of Planning and Construction.
Thank you. Good evening, Men of the Chair Board, it's Lieutenant Magnus. I want to thank those who spoke at the public hearing tonight. I think we all see that Chris is a great ambassador to this community. Even though Chris may play on the West Coast, this is home, this is home for him and his family. And so we're excited about the opportunity. I think you also received a letter from the Shafter Foundation as a means of support as well, on top of our speakers tonight. So I'll open it up for any questions, and if they're any negative, I might ask Mr. Bar to have my bag.
I just have a comment. Years ago, we highlighted schools at every, every board meeting. And so whenever West Forsyth was highlighted, Chris Paul was a senior, and he did a rap song for the whole board, and it was, it was amazing. It was, it was really neat. But I'm lucky enough to have my children have attended school with Chris, and he is a fine, fine young man. If he was not a stellar athlete, he would just be a stellar person for the community. And so he, a fine young man, but, but it was hilarious. It was an ABC rap, and he did it to every letter, and I mean, man, he could rap. So it was, but just thought I'd just say that. So years ago, he was president of senior class, and whenever they highlighted West, that was his contribution to the, to the program.
I just wanted to definitely supplement what Barbara Parker is saying about the man Chris Paul, who comes from, you know, an exceptional family. And so I want to recognize the Chris Paul Family Foundation, from Chris Paul, mother, father, children, wife, brother, everybody is just triple-A stellar people that appreciate the experience of helping others. And I couldn't find a better model for our community as it relates to what it means to be a neighbor.
And I just want to say to the ceremony, assuming we all go in, it's September 1st?
September 1st, uh, 2:30 or 2? 2:30.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Our next discussion item is the Contract with YMCA of Northwest North Carolina Transforming Teens Program presented by Rodriguez Stokes, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board Members, and Superintendent McMinus. I am here to share information regarding the Transforming Teens Program. First, I would like to recognize some of our partners in the Transforming Teens Program. Carrie Collins from the YMCA who's here today, and Sheriff Bobby Kimrow is also here. So thank you for being here, being partners. So as we look at the Transforming Teens Program, the vision really is to provide a national model of public-private collaborative partnerships to mentor our youth in our schools. Not only will they be working with our youth, they will also be engaging our families. The program will provide equalized, it will equalize the playing field so that everyone in the community can thrive. They will also provide every student with the opportunity to give kids, students a chance, and it'll also provide quality opportunities for students that sail best in the program. So as we look at our community partnerships, this will not be just, what's the title, Forsyth County Schools, it will be a partnership amongst many community members. Our community partners, the Sheriff's Department, YMCA of Northwest North Carolina, the CP3 Foundation, the Flo Family Foundation, and Tiny Indians Football Program will all be supporting these efforts. When we look at the program details, we're really looking at investing in 50 of our students who are part of the Tiny Indians Football Program, and those students are in grades 3 through 8. And this will be our first cohort for the 2022, 2023 school year. When we look at the schools that the students are coming from, you can see it's in a variety of elementary and middle schools across the district, and we're adding as more students become involved in the Tiny Indians Program. And so although there's a range in age from third through eighth grade students, the kids will be separated out by age level. As we look at our daily program activities, our students will be arriving at Winston Lake Family YMCA after school, and this will be at least three days a week. They will be greeted, and then they will have the opportunity to eat a healthy nutritious meal. They're going to have study time... They're going to have study time, tutors, where they'll be providing weekly tutoring services to the students. And then there'll be a mentor meetup, where they're connecting with an adult as their mentor, where they'll have that opportunity to talk to them about what's going on in school, what's going on in their life. They'll have the opportunity to set goals with students. And then they'll move on to activity time, and then there'll also be additional program additions, such as take-home meals for our families, various family activities to get them involved, and then there are also weekend backpacks of food. So that's the logistics of the daily program activities. Are there any questions regarding the program?
Uh, Dr. Stokes, I don't have questions. I just wanted to say that, I want to say thank you both to YMCA of Northwest North Carolina and to Winston Lake. As a person who, I grew up at Winston Lake, I attended every single program from Black Achievers to having my first job at Winston Lake, so I am a product of all of the good work from Winston Lake. And of course, the Sheriff Bobby Kimbrough, their work speaks for itself, so I'm going to thank you all for being here, and thank you for being partners in this work.
Dr. Stokes, I know that the sheriff has come to be with us this evening. I don't know if, if he had anything to say, that's the question I was going to ask if he was here, and I was soon to be governor of the program, but if not, that's fine too. But I know that he was here regarding the program.
Sheriff, if you would like to come up?
Madam Chair, Board members, superintendents, I just wanted to thank you all for the frequent partnerships, and we have no partnerships going forward. I think that we're truly making a difference in the community. We're in this role having worked, and we've worked, and we've assisted, and we've worked with all the partners, our industry, and entities in our communities. We started out taking some kids in camp, and we want to do it on a general level, because what we realize is that the work without children's seat affects their vision, and also affects what they'll become, what they'll be. And so we're trying to show them something, and give them the tools to do it. And that is, we're going to thank you all for the opportunity to be a part of it. And that's why I'm here today to support this conference, YMCA, and all of our partners. And I thank you all, I thank you all for what you've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. If there's, if we're serving 50 children, and the grade range went from third through eighth, I'm having trouble with the math, that there's got to be a minimum, probably 20, 25 kids on the team at each grade level, how does that add up to 50? Standards would be a lot lower than 50.
So we're starting the mentor program focusing in on the 50, on 50 students.
So just because you're a member of the Tiny Indians doesn't mean you have to be in this program. There'll be 50 of them that will be picked for the start.
There'll be 50 of them that will be working, yeah, will be picked for mentors. Some of our mentors will be some of the individuals from the sheriffs department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Next is the Profound Gentlemen Contract, presented by Dr. Leslie Alexander, our Chief HR Officer.
Thank you, Board Chair Kaplan, School Board members, Superintendent McManus. This is just a brief update about partnerships that we're really excited about called Profound Gentlemen. So I'm going to first start with strategic goal number four, which is what this initiative supports. It's our goal to recruit and retain highly effective and a diverse workforce that supports our, our district goals. Part of that objective includes building the capacity of employees to perform at higher levels, and also to develop succession planning. You guys have probably remember me talking about the Wallace Grant, and that's our Equity Centered Principal Pipeline Grant, and that also helps with succession planning. And so this fits nicely with that initiative. We're attempting to develop competencies for all of our school leaders, and increase the need, we're going to recruit and retain a more diverse pipeline of leadership candidates. When we think about diversity in our school district, we are really short as far as that goes with our school building leaders, and where we get our school building leaders is from our teaching population. So if we think about our men of color in particular, we have 757 male teachers, 189 of them are men of color. So they're 25% of our male teacher population, but only 6% of our teachers are men of color. So this initiative with Profound Gentlemen, its goal is to build a community of male educators of color who will express growth in self-efficacy, community connectedness, interpersonal skills, and responsible decision-making. So this model is a cohort model, and it supports the growth opportunities that will be provided through one-on-one coaching, retreats, content community circles, community building experiences, and conference participation. So this year, we had 10 teachers participate in this, and so they, they had a really great experience. This is where they represented. We had three teachers from John F. Kennedy High School, two from Reynolds, one from Atkins, one from Flat Rock, one, two from Spies, and one from Con Oak. And so the good news is that we were able to retain 100% of the, of the gentlemen that participated in this program. Some of their feedback was that they really enjoyed being part of this small content community, able to share resources, collaborate, and build community with males of color inside and outside the district. Another participant said that it really helped him encourage to take leadership roles and play an active role in shaping the school community. I got to spend some time on the phone today with Gavin Gabriel, who is our contact for this group. They are actually in several different states, Georgia, Illinois, Massachusetts, New York, North Carolina. And so they work this cohort model where they'll tailor it to what the district wants really, but what we're thinking is that we work with individuals who are, you know, beginning to year five, really working with them to support them. It would be a two-year cohort where they would spend the first year as initial beginning members of this group, and then they would roll off at year three. By doing so, we'd be able to touch more individuals over time. It's really important that, that we be able to recruit more young men of color to lead our schools. Out of 81 schools, we only have nine schools that are led by a, a male of color. And so we really want to start with our recruitment, retention, and support of our teaching staff. And so this program has been, we consider pretty effective, and so we're just letting you know that we plan to renew that grant, and it will be paid for out of the Wallace Grant. Any question?
Yeah. I noticed in some of the information that you sent us that, like, 70% didn't.
That's a typo. I talked to Gavin about that. I'm like, Gavin, it says several places that some of you did participate, but then then the limitations of the study, it says they didn't. He said, no, I'm sorry, that's a typo.
Okay. So 70%. So that's already, okay, I was going to ask if there was just another tool that would compete, because I mean, it sounded like such a wonderful program, I couldn't imagine that they weren't responding.
No, and three of them actually, so the, the participants don't have to pay for anything when they participate in the program. Three of them actually went to a conference in Chicago this last year. It was available to all of them. Many other, others of them just went to community retreats, and it was really a good opportunity for them to get mentoring experience, and it just sounded like a great initiative, and really, you know, reminding them of the why, of why they chose education. So I think it's, it's a great partnership, and just wanted to share a little bit about it with you.
Anybody else? Okay. Board Member Crowley?
Okay, two questions for you. One, are these, most of these teachers certified teachers, or are they lateral entry coming in?
So this first year was our first year to try it. So this first year, we didn't really limit it to the zero to five years of experience. We sent out an interest survey, and the people that were interested, we, we sort of took them. From that, we've learned that you really want to focus on this zero to five years. So it could be anybody in the zero to five years. We would not restrict it against somebody that had like a permitted teacher, emergency or residency license, because those individuals also need support. Yeah, so we would be targeting that group. This year, we'll add up to six more individuals to the group.
Okay, and this next question's a little harder.
That's okay.
Over the course of this past summer, I know there's several articles about companies being sued for targeting specific demographics for their workforce. Navant is in, just settled, or is in a lawsuit right now, where the plaintiff won because he said he was discriminated against because the company was trying to achieve a balanced workforce. How are we addressing that?
Well, I think it would be the same way when I was a high school principal, whenever we were a mad school, and we had to target certain demographics of students, and it was just fine to target demographics where you were underrepresented. And we are underrepresented with our men of color, both in the teaching and the leadership positions. So yeah, most of the, most of the current research, educational research and grants that are out there are promoting diversity, so I think that we're right in line with, with where the education's headed.
Board Member Lloyd Barry?
So our, one question I have, is do we have any teachers in the pipeline since ready this year, figure of success, and maybe we couldn't bring in, and maybe we wanted, so are we having out there in the pipeline?
It was funny, I was talking to Gavin today, and he said they had gone to Reynolds just to talk about it, and they had so many people that wanted to sign up, and they weren't really ready to take new applicants at that point. One of the teachers who has participated, Philip Boyd, is at Reynolds, and has just been really gung ho about it. So I think word of mouth sort of gets out there. I wish we had more capacity to support, but at least this is a start, and we're growing a cohort, building a model.
So essentially, for the year coming up, we'll have to go through the application process with people wanting?
Yes, Gavin, we'll work with him to send out a letter of interest, and then people who are interested will respond to that letter, and then we'll look at the applications.
So to Board Member Crowley's kind of earlier point, I guess I wanted to kind of be a little bit more pointed. I think that the, the issue about the zero to five, I think, is that, and the, whether or not you're lateral entry or licensed, is that if you're licensed, and if you went to college with the intention of being a teacher, your sort of why is kind of inherent. If you were sort of kind of lateral entry, found the profession kind of later, I think there's a point, I think there's an argument to be made about being intentional, about maybe looking at people who are sort of in this profession kind of laterally, who are kind of like, oh, I just need some additional support around being sort of kind of entered into the game. I didn't really think originally this was going to be my thing. I think that may be something that we kind of look at, because that was what I was thinking, is about sort of within the sort of demographic, in terms of your experience, and sort of, you know, how you got to education, I think that that may be a part of it as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to think about. I think we always want to be sensitive about overload for individuals, so having people who express an interest, given that they are still taking classes or whatever else might be happening in their life is important. I was a lateral entry teacher back in the day, so, you know, I know what that's like. We also know that we lose our year three teachers, and so that whether they're licensed or not licensed, that's the year we get to lose them. So I think the zero to five is a good, good range.
And this sounds like a wonderful support program. I know after, we don't have wallets around or whatever, is this something that the district could replicate?
I do think so. I was talking, talking to Gavin today about building a pipeline of the, the actual coaches that they use, and so those coaches have been in education or are in education, but then they get additional licensure, like they had a lot of interest in FDL. So their coaches went out and got training in FDL. And so I think we can kind of grow our own to support it once that initiative is done. This is, this is for 16 young men or men of color, and she earns $18,000. It's not an extremely large amount of money, so I think we can figure out how to replicate that and make that something that's on. Thank you.
Anybody? Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Next is the 90 by 2025 update, presented by Nicollette Gray, our Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board members, and Ms. McManus. I want to introduce our, our team that will be also presenting with me. We have a couple of board members from our 90 by 2025 planning group that has been meeting every two weeks for the last year, planning, strategizing our resources. So with me, Dr. Paula Wilkins will be presenting, Stephanie Ward, and Dr. Satala Latton. So over the last year, our team has met. We have a cross-functional, cross-functional team made up of our EC department, multilingual learners, MTSS, English Language Arts, our beginning teacher support, professional development, media services, and we have been strategizing around all of the resources we have, and looking at our literacy framework. Our literacy framework is focused on equity, systematic use of data, professional development and coaching. And this graphic that was developed by the team looks at what our district supports, our community supports, and family supports are needed to make this happen. We know that it cannot happen by school alone, that we need the support of our community and our families, and so this graphic outlines that vision. Part of the work of our team was looking at not just the what we do, but the why we do it, and it was really important for the team to make sure that all of this framework was centered within a culture of literacy, where every student is a reader, every student believes that they are a reader, and that we develop a love of reading. That was extremely important, especially to our media director, media services director, and that we know that that's important for lifelong learning. So it's, part of it is just learning how to read, and part of it is develop a love of reading, and those two need to be married together in order for lifelong reading to occur. And so our 90 by 2025 goal that was started last year, or announced last year, was really focused on our third grade as a benchmark and a marker to success. We know that students are learning how to read from pre-K through second grade, and we're building the foundational skills necessary for them to be successful. And once they switch to third grade, that's when students need to know how to read in order to access curriculum. And so we know that it's a critical mark of future success, and that we want to make sure every one of our students in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools by third grade is a proficient reader, and can read critically, and discern information from their reading. We know that it's also one of the key levers to closing the achievement and opportunity gaps, to make sure every child was able to read, and that it is an indicator of our on-time success graduation. So everything that we do is to provide a strong foundation and be preventative, instead of waiting until students are older and we're trying to intervene, a challenge with foundational skills. So next, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wilkins.
So this has been a year of excitement. Last year in June, our superintendent said this is our district goal, and this is our focus, and we are integrating this into our strategic plan, and we want to make this a key priority, and I think we have all pulled together to make sure that happens. So what have we accomplished this year? So I think we've done a lot in service of this goal. We still have lots of work still to continue to do. One of the first pieces that Mrs. Grant just mentioned was our committee aligned into the action steps. The other thing you have before you, and is also linked, is the 90 by 25 plan. And so this plan is our vibe, it is our roadmap. It spells out our action steps, it also spells out our framework for how we go about the work, and how we're going to continue to work together to meet the goals. And what I love about this is this is not just an academic goal, this is about how we pull together both our community, our parents and families, and our community stakeholders to make this happen. And we'll talk a little bit more about how we've worked to unpack and work with these various groups of folks over this past year, and what we've accomplished with that as well. The website is in development, but we wanted to make sure you all had a preview first of a lot of the work we've been doing, we've shared, and some soft launch sessions with community groups for feedback, as we work to develop this plan as well. You will also notice, it says it's page 12, but it's page 21, the numbers have been updated. Page 21 in the book talks about our framework for eliciting equity as a focus, which is a core pillar of our core values and within our strategic plan, to ensure that there are prioritized schools that get additional support as we work to meet this goal, and how we roll out initiatives and think about how we start those schools very well. Literacy coaches, as was noted in curriculum committee earlier today, for some of those same prioritized schools, has been a key focus of this particular goal as well, as well as the TNTP support partnership to support those literacy coaches. Cohort, one of the letters, we were one of the very few districts that signed on and adopted the opportunity to engage our teachers in learning letters, and we also have a cohort of district leaders taking that training prior to teachers for additional support for the teachers and coaches as the letters, particular philosophical support pieces for foundational reading is rolled out. Community tutor initiatives, so we talked a little bit about reading warriors, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But also NCA Corps. What I'm really excited about is all of those initiatives are working in tandem together to target various populations of students in order for us to meet this goal. to target various populations of students in order for us to meet this goal. It has been a true wraparound collaborative involvement with our M T S S lead to think about how do we serve interventions for the students? What are the curriculums used to serve them? And how do we work together to look at the data, to look at student assignment? So that has been a collaborative process also. And then we're reflecting on our partnerships. So the education initiative is a group that meets quarterly. It includes lots of community groups, Second Harvest, the School Health Alliance, you know, in a way, a lot of key partners in our community that are all committed to help us meet this goal and looking at ways and steps that we can all take together to help with both wraparound services as we look to meet the 95 25 goal. So what we worked on is about being cohesive in our approach to supporting the whole child and being engaged in our entire community as we work to meet this goal. And so I just mentioned about the prioritization, we asking how are they selected? Well, student data was one piece, looking at their funding support available as well as if they have additional identification pieces related to staff or student mobility, showing the need with the transientcy in their population and then the current services and needs available at the school. Want to get that off page 11 and 12. Thank you, Ward, our literacy meeting.
Good evening. Last year, last school year, we had 1,400 elementary E C, ESL and pre K teachers to begin letters cohort one as part of House, Senate, House Bill 387 as a legislative requirement. But the hard work and commitment that it took to get that pulled off last year, all the credit has to go out to our amazing classroom teachers and school leaders. I'm not going to say it wasn't hard work and a sacrifice, but they rose to that. I am super excited to hear the conversations, to see the instructional practices. Last week, my team and I had the, the great honor of being an Inspire 340 Institute and working with every classroom teacher to process units three and four of how we're going to implement what we've been learning over the past year. These same teachers who are returning to our district will begin units five through eight this year. Our new hires and V Ts, as you heard early curriculum committee, to sustain letters as our state Department of Public Instruction is guiding us to do with our state funds, P R C O D five. We will begin a new cohort to continue this because by all of us having the same training, it keeps us on the same page. We have the same instructional routines. We all, for the first time ever, have the same background knowledge on literacy and foundational reading skills. So with that knowledge, with that power, now it's time to process and put that into implementation and instructional routines. So we're very excited to be working with principals, assistant principals, area superintendents, our instructional facilitators, but most importantly, our classroom teachers, E C, ESL and all other support personnel to make sure that we have the strongest literacy core instruction that we possibly can in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. A big shout out to Mrs. Tricia McManus for her commitment that every child, no matter what classroom, what elementary classroom, whatever part of the district they are at, they have brand new, high quality, engaging, inviting books to pick from. And in elementary, you know, when you're with kindergarten, first grader, second grader, you're going to have a lot of books to keep them excited and motivated. But not only will this build vocabulary and background knowledge, but as Ms. Grant shared, we want our students to love to read. We want them to have choice. We want them surrounded in a pretty rich environment in every classroom that we have that equitable opportunity, no matter where you go to school. So thank you, Ms. McManus, for those 300 books that our teachers, when they got to their classroom doors, the last, had done a white glove service for us for free, had put them at their door. So you can see here, there was five, six boxes waiting for them and they were super excited, but most importantly, appreciative of this. So thank you.
I'm going to run through our community and family update.
So I gave you a Bible numbers update for reading warriors, I think in November last year. So where do we end the year? A few different things. We had over 332 to volunteer, to register to volunteer, let me clarify. 210 selected a school. We had 118 that served in first grade, 32 in kindergarten and 141 kindergarten and first grade served for the entire year. We also did a full evaluation of year one implementation of reading warriors and I just want to highlight a few strengths and then opportunities and kind of where we're going next. Volunteers overall expressed they really enjoyed their experience and that they were really grateful to be back in school and to be able to have a direct impact on students, to be able to get trained, to be able to provide service and feel very useful. Those were some of the comments that we heard. Some of the challenges, they wanted more time to practice with some of the skills that they were taught in the training and that is actually coming up next. There were some concerns about how do we target more of our volunteers? And so we're working on some recruitment efforts for that, for our volunteers. Also getting folks who sign up to actually volunteers. We have worked with a community engagement volunteer office to look at the registration process, to try to clarify that a little bit so we can minimize some of that confusion in the process as volunteers select and find out to be reading warriors. We also have decided based on last year, because we had two different curriculums with reading warriors, we're going to do one unified curriculum this year. And our first training kicks off tomorrow with a small group. So yes, volunteers will need to be trained again, but what is so exciting is they can go back and forth from a first grader to a kindergartner because we're using the exact same curriculum. And so service tools and supports, we believe in continuous improvement. We use the volunteer feedback to help us to continue to improve the program. So those are some things that are ahead for us to strengthen and get to that thousand number of volunteers hopefully in year two. Also just a few highlights with the ed initiative. We looked at some wraparound service focused priorities. So for instance, we looked at Second Harvest pantry expansion into some of our schools with greater need. We're looking at some service expansion for mobile pantries in some of those schools as well, expanding those partnerships with a school health alliance. We looked at how can we begin to get more families to utilize services existing that are available? So we've worked on some communication pieces to help improve in that area. And then we're looking forward to more collaborations with our partners to expand services and supports to both schools and families in our district to help us meet the goal. So as far as family updates, we were able to tag along in a lot of great big community events to offer opportunities for family engagement and literacy activity sessions. We did Christmas for the city as well as Colidium where we had various stations for families and students five by five to work with volunteers to learn how to do those activities at home. And they took those activities with them to work with their children at home. We also did book library expansion and we received lots of donations to help us do book giveaways for students to expand their home libraries. And then one of the, I think one of the precious things for me is we had capes and we actually have characters now. So the tutor is a reading warrior and the student is also a reading warrior. So we have reading warrior characters and we gave away capes and masks because of course everybody loves those superheroes. And so getting students engaged in this whole idea of being a superhero as you learn to read as well. So looking ahead, we're, the instructional services, media services team is working with Forsyth County Public Library to collaborate on summer reading activities already and summer kickoff for our partnership of family literacy activities and some existing events at libraries across our community within Forsyth County. Now some K two literacy data for dibbles.
I am here to present just a chunk size or bite sized piece of what the data looks like for K one and two. We use two different measures. The first measure was I Ready, it's like our universal screener. And then we have dibbles. Dibbles just started back based on San Diego pre eight seven where we started it, where it happened maybe about three to five years prior. And so there was a lot of hesitancy about giving data, dibbles, because it is a one on one assessment that teachers actually provide to students. However, it goes a little bit deeper than what I Ready shows. And so it hits on what I would say five domains, phonics, vocabulary, phonetic awareness, reading comprehension, and then reading fluency. So what you see now is the data that is represented for our kinder. And we see it from a perspective of beginning of the year, middle of the year and end of year. And I am here happy to report that for our kinder, we were actually above the state average. And so I will show you first grade as well as second grade. But before I do that, I just wanted to share that we just, what Nicollette shared, Stephanie as well as Paula, what we just shared was a system, right? And so that's what we've been, been talking about. How do we put these puzzles, puzzle pieces together to make a system that will be proven to show academic growth for our students? And I believe that we have that system. We may not see huge gains, but any kind of systemic change is going to take about anywhere from three to four years. And so we're seeing little movement now, but in year two and in year three, you will really see the plane take off. Okay? And so here is what we have for first grade. And this is just a comparison again from where we were for dibbles as well as I Ready. And we're seeing that we actually moved from 24% to 38% in first grade. And then for second grade, we saw a movement from 16% to about 28%.
So thank you to our, our team members for sharing. So this has been a year of planning, a year of collaborating, a year of strategizing. Our goal's going into next year. We feel like we have the right resources. We have amazing teachers, they have the skills. Next, we're going to be really focusing on accountability and monitoring the data and really making adjustments and changes to that data. So keeping it on the margin forward, focusing on our now first grade students, which is our first cohort for 2020 25, and then supporting our teachers through coaching, professional development and resources as we go forward. And then we will come back and provide you with another update at a later time. So thank you so much for listening to our presentation. We know that it is possible to do this if we have the support of the community, our families and our teachers. Any questions for our team?
Okay, thank you so much. This looks exciting. Thank you. The next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the proposed naming of the West Forsyth Gym Core. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the contract with YMCA and Northwest Word Carolina Transforming Teens Program. Okay, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of a profound gentleman contract. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we're on the roll. Next, consider approval of policy 2022, 2023 Title I application. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, opposed? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of policy 5131 Student Behavior. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we took, this is the document amendment, so we talked about a policy meeting, this is just not a board. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Let the change that we discussed.
Right, let the changes that we discussed. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, the vote is seven in favor, one opposed. Motion passes. Next, consider approval of the, of the policy 5127.1 Early Graduation. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
I have a question about that one.
Okay.
I'm not sure if this was discussed because I missed the last policy meeting, but the concerns that I've heard about this from counselors is that a student who decides to graduate early could then bump out students who are, who are, you know, who are already thinking that they were number one in the class and that that could happen.
Yes. Yeah, that is a potential it could happen. At the end of the year, everyone is ranked. And so those students who are three year graduates, early graduates, they'll be graduating in three years if their GPA is higher than someone that is a senior, which most of the time it doesn't happen. But if it is, it can happen. That student can be number one, you can be number one across the board because they are ranked with the seniors. That's a part of our policy. So if they're number one at the end of the year, they will meet without a Victorian or our previous policy, even though they were number one, you wouldn't say that they were valid. So there is a potential for those students to be, if they were in the senior class, once we move them over in policies, they're moving them over at the end of the first semester because if they have enough credits to be a senior, then they will be ranked at the end of the fall of the seniors.
So did you have, sorry, did you have?
I just wanted to know that that could be a potential controversy down the road.
So I had a question around, and part of my ignorance, the, if a student is like a three year graduate, where are they getting that additional credit from? Would it be, would it be from, what are the possibilities of where that credit comes from?
So they're getting from middle school because they do take, you know, math one and potentially math two and foreign language in middle school. We have students who are taking online courses, they're taking courses during the summer. They're taking college courses too at Forsyth, take community college. So they're taking extra courses and some of them are coming in with, with at least two credits if they're taking math one in like a third grade. And so they're coming in with already some credits, but the students that we've seen, they're taking extra courses throughout the summer and throughout the school year. Some of them are planning to go straight to college and they finish in three years.
And so are they getting, are they, if they take courses outside of the school system to those grades, are we counting their credits in the grades or just the credits that they've taken from other institutions?
So most of the courses that they're taking is at Forsyth to take community college. And there's a process that they go through. If it's a course outside of their music and another university, where we send that information to our instructional services department, we vet the course, make sure it's aligned with the, send a course of study and then they may receive credit if it's aligned with the courses. But most of the time they're, they are taking courses at Forsyth, which is aligned and which is permitted through the College and Career Fulfillment Program, where they have the opportunity to transfer those credits to college and it helps say what amount of credit they need once they get into the four year institution.
Right, so the credit question, I can, I guess what I'm asking is the grades that they receive in those classes, are they factored into the GPA?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so because of that, I guess the sort of larger question is, because we have of course like regular classes, honors level courses and IP AP. For those kind of college level classes, do we have a way of, okay, if a student takes a college level course, is, what's the weight? Are we still doing that way?
Yeah, we are. And yeah, we are. And it's at the same way as like the AP courses. So it's like a three, five over. So the weights are still calculated. So it's like a 35 of, so the way it's also still calculated in honors is a certain level in the AP in the college credit courses that are.
And classroom, classroom is best on the way to the AP.
That's right. But by the, is looking at all of their courses that they've taken, recuse it for four years or if they've done it in three years, excuse it for three years. But the middle school courses, high school courses that they're taking in middle school isn't factored into their GPA. It's not a child that you can add. Yeah. It's only for college.
Dr. Stokes, the student who could potentially graduate early could opt to say, I don't want to, I'm just going to take another semester year with a course so that I can graduate with traditionally my class. Is that correct?
Yes. So most of, yeah, most of the students that graduated three years, they would like counselor, they met with their parents and they've made a decision to do this within the three years. You just really don't, you know, stumble upon it, just a plan. And typically they're planning on going to college or could be a gap year and they're going to be before the actual, into a new course.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the MOU with Head Start. Do I have a motion?
Move for it.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? None? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Magnet Schools of America Professional Development Contract. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Elizabeth? Oh, okay. I just wanted to hear your voice. Okay. That motion passes and that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of Amendment to North State Security Contract. Do I have a motion?
Move. Yes, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. That is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Back to School Bonus Pending DPI Approval Contract. Vote.
Back to School Advice. Back to School Advice.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
We have this month, hopefully this will be approved by the FBI.
Yes. Yes. All in favor. Okay. That is unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is the Consent Agenda. There we have four items for approval. First, consider approval of the General Personnel Report. Consider approval of the June 14, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes. Consider approval of the June 28, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes. And consider approval of a resolution appointing a school finance officer. Do I have a motion?
So, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor to approve all four consent agenda items?
I just do have one comment, which is I am so happy to welcome Mr. Cranketor, the chief of, glad he's here.
Yes, me too. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Okay. One more time. Do I have a motion to approve all four consent agenda items?
Yes.
And second. Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is announcements. Monday, August 29, 2022 will be the first day of school. Tuesday, September 13, 2022 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. So before we begin, the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on anything, let me say to our viewers on YouTube, thank you for watching and this will conclude our broadcast. At this time, we will open the meeting to those who have signed up to comment.